Okay, is it, oh, we get Liz's here for DECA.
Good evening and welcome to the Georgetown School Committee meeting of Thursday, September 28th, 2017. If we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Before we start with our official business, we do have some approval of meeting minutes that we need to get through. So I will make a motion to approve regular session minutes of September 14th, 2017, special session minutes of August 7th, 2017, governance minutes of September 12th, 2017, budget and finance minutes of September 9th, 2017, and accept warrants number 13V18 and number 12P18.
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have our student rep Chloe here today to talk to us about how things are going.
Things are going pretty good. There's a little change with homecoming. It's not gonna be the 20th because I think it's boosters I that night. And there's a lot of parent complaints about it, so we had to change it. And right now, we're looking at the tournament schedule, but we don't, we won't know it until after the 20th, so we have to see until then. But, so clubs are happening now. We're having meetings in the morning. Key Club is actually raising money for the Virgin Islands. I think there's a local mom who has family down there.
Yes.
And they don't have any like cell service or anything, can't get in touch, so that's great. There's a bunch of boxes all around the school for certain supplies.
That's nice.
And then just moving into the fall weather is really nice. It's been kind of hot this week in the school, but tonight, I mean today was pretty nice. And yeah, and PSATs are October 14th. I think we need to get in our checks by the 6th. And school pictures are coming in. I think middle school got them yesterday. High school hasn't gotten them yet, but soon, I think very soon.
Yeah, I see that it was saying, you know, get your picture retaken. I'm like, well, I didn't even see their first picture yet. So, so they'll be coming in soon?
Yeah.
Good. So what is the boosters doing that night?
Athletic boosters or something.
You know what they're doing?
Didn't know we had boosters.
I don't. I'm sorry, there's some going on that night.
A conflict.
Yeah.
That's exciting.
I'll look into it.
Is there a volleyball fundraiser on October 10th? I heard something like that.
It's Sunday.
At somewhere?
They're two, it's two Patriots players.
Yeah.
Yeah, the October.
Going to high school. That's all the details that I know.
Oh, that's nice.
From a Facebook post that I read.
And you say, did you say Sunday?
I don't know.
No, okay, 'cause I heard October 10th, which I think would be Tuesday.
Don't know.
But, yeah. But that, that's just hearsay. That's, I don't, that's no announcement.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, assuming those things would be on the morning announcements, but I don't know.
I didn't hear anything in school, so that's cool though.
Keep our ears open.
Right. And the PSAT, the money you said has to be in by?
October 6th.
Okay. And that's an early morning.
Yeah, Saturday, early morning.
Well, that's good. So everything is going well at the schools, which is good. I left the high school last night at like 7 o'clock, and it was so nice to walk out the front and look at the turf field, and it was like, um, flag football going on. But it was just, it was just very vibrant. It was nice.
Energy, that's right. It is an energetic.
Yeah, and today's a much better day, weather-wise.
Yeah.
I'm ready for the fall. Good. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Chloe.
Okay, is there anyone here from the public that would like to talk about anything on the agenda this evening? Okay, we have a very special guest this evening that I'm happy to introduce, Mr. Cosmo Lund.
His mom's here as well.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi there.
Come sit down.
Welcome.
Thank you for coming out this evening.
He's gonna be a movie star tonight, I told him.
So we heard about you through an article in the Georgetown Record, and we were very impressed. You had a birthday recently or over the summer? And what did you do in terms of the birthday?
So instead of gifts, we donated the things we got to the Makerspace.
That was very nice of you. So what made you think of doing that?
Well...
He always says, "It was mom's idea." It was mom's idea.
It was, that's okay.
It's just an interesting thing. When you have, when you have kid birthday parties and you always try to figure out, "What do I bring for a gift?" And somebody else that we knew had done a book donation party a few years ago, and I thought that was a great idea. So I had seen articles about the Makerspace starting up. So I said to him, you know, he gets a lot of presents from family. So I said, "What if we send an email out to everybody, invite them to the party, and say they don't have to bring a gift, but if they want, they can bring something for the Makerspace," right? And then we made a box. And then they brought so much stuff. Yeah, it was great.
One friend even brought a humongo box.
A box of his own, right? So we got a lot, a lot bigger response than we thought. I had said, "You don't even have to donate anything," but this is what he's doing for his birthday.
So what were some of the things that people brought?
Well... Just about everything.
Yeah, so like arts, arts and crafts things, yeah?
Glue sticks.
Yeah, glue sticks.
Paper cups, wire.
Oh, wow.
Felt.
And Mrs. Frabel said she came, did she come meet you and took it? She was very grateful for that. Have you been to the Makerspace? Have you been in there?
Yes, I have.
Played around with everything?
Well, yeah.
You think of it.
I like it.
That's good. What grade are you in?
Fourth.
Fourth grade.
So when do you get to go to the Makerspace?
Usually during some library trips.
Well, I think it's just great. You know, it's, we were so impressed that, you know, whoever's idea it was, that you were happy to have, you know, to do something for other people instead of on a day that's really special for you. So, yeah.
You get full credit.
Not every, not every, not everybody would do that, you know?
You wanted to do it.
Not everybody would do that. So we thought that was really in, in the spirit of all the things that I know you do at Pembroke, where you work together, cooperation, and helping each other out, and it was a great example. So sometimes the school committee invites people who do special things like this to come and, and you are on TV, which is a good thing, so you're famous. But, you know, it's just in...
You can see yourself right back there if you look up. You just made his day.
And you're not even nervous. That's really impressive.
And you know, on his birthday, he was really happy about it. He had no regrets.
Yeah, that's what I, yeah.
He was really...
That's what we thought was great.
Fine with it. He didn't come home and say, "I didn't get any presents." It was a done thing. He was fine. Wait till fifth grade, right?
Well, maybe it'll catch on, and you'll inspire others.
Well, and we got, I posted the link to the article, and then I got people on Facebook contacting me saying, "I wanna donate something. Where do I donate?" So it was even beyond his birthday.
That's nice.
That's excellent.
And so did you go on the list of, that Ms. Marquette and Ms. Frabel put together to give people ideas?
So I used that list and sent it out to the parents that we, to the parents of the kids that he was inviting. So I sent them a link, and I also copied the list and sent it in the email and said, "Any of these things that you want to bring?" And we got so much stuff, we didn't know what to do with it.
Well, we knew what to do with it, right? So that's a good thing.
But it really is very impressive that you did that.
Yeah.
That was very kind of you to think of the schools, and we really appreciate it. Happy birthday.
Yeah.
Thank you.
How old are you?
Uh, nine.
I think the best thing is too, that you didn't have any regrets about it after the fact.
Yeah.
That's great. And I'm sure a lot of kids are gonna be able to take advantage of all the things that were donated. Right, including you.
Thank you so much for coming and making the time.
Thank you for having us.
You're welcome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you.
I bet you can see it on YouTube later.
Have a good night.
That's awesome.
And his nanny came as well tonight. She didn't come up, but she came to support him.
Okay, we have some field trip approvals that we need to take care of. Liz, wanna come on up?
Good evening, Liz.
Thank you for taking on the DECA program. We appreciate all that Mrs. Ryer has done to bring the program to where it, it has come. She's done a great job. But the fact that you stepped up, we really appreciate it because we are so proud of our DECA students. I would hate to see that program not be able to continue.
Exactly.
So that was great of you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Much appreciated.
And are you looking for judges at the Merrimack College?
Yeah, they will be reaching out for judges, and each chapter is responsible for getting X amount of judges. We haven't had the district advisor meeting yet. That should be later in October.
Okay.
So once that occurs, then we'll solidify how many we need.
And when is that, Liz, again? That's January?
January, usually January. Yeah, that's the day trip, and then the overnight trips are the March dates and the April dates, which we will need overnight chaperones for both of those.
I remember the one year, I remember you were there too, the one year at Merrimack that we went, it was so cold. That we were almost thinking it was gonna cancel.
Yeah, I remember that one. That was a cold one.
Because it was that cold out, but then didn't cancel.
They didn't cancel it.
They don't cancel. That's a big, that's a lot of organization, a lot of work. They're not gonna cancel them, they have to.
About 650 kids estimated for this year at Merrimack College, so.
Cause you actually, last year, had a couple of new schools that joined, right?
It did.
Like Masco was new?
Yeah, Masco was one. There was a couple other vocational schools, though they didn't compete. They were just there to observe the day. This year, they're gonna actually be competing, which is gonna increase the number.
Hopefully, they'll send some judges as well.
Yes, they will.
So you're hoping to have approximately 50 attend?
Yes. Right now, we have 56 kids signed up, so we'll have that number. The registration is due to National DECA mid-October, so we'll have that number solidified by then, but with returning members.
Can you tell me how that compares?
It is roughly the same, a little bit higher. We have more freshmen joining this year than we did last year.
Okay.
But that's because our Intro to Business course, that's pulling a lot of them.
I did have a question on this, and I can't find where my question was.
So is, is that basically, you might not know, but how DECA gets, pulls judges, is they, they tell each district that, you know, we need?
Yes, each district is responsible, and they've been doing that for years. Prior to Georgetown, I was a DECA advisor.
Because last year, they, I think they had fewer judges than ever before, and I'm just hoping that they're gonna be able to come up with the number that they need.
Each district.
I mean, they really, you know, so if anyone's thinking of volunteering, it's much, much appreciated because, you know, that really helps the kids out a lot.
Yep, they, they reach out to each district for, to come up with X amount of judges, so.
It's a fun experience. It's so inspiring, I mean, to, to see what the kids come up with, and they're given these, you know, prompts. Prompts and, and role plays.
Role plays.
And role plays, that's right.
There we go, that's the word.
Role plays, and they sometimes have like 10 minutes to come up with their, their plan, but they do. They just get really creative. They focus, and they come up with these great ideas, and they have visuals and all kinds of...
And sometimes the judges are judging the written's, which I believe you did last year, right?
Yep.
So that, you may just be reading the...
Right.
The binder, you know, the 36-page paper that the student wrote.
Yeah, well, I remember a couple of years ago, I, I was given binders, and I had like, I had like 10 minutes to read them, and then the group came in.
Came in, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I did some of that too. Those are, yeah.
I forget what those are called.
Those are the hybrid. So they, they write and they present.
And they present, right. So I was like, "I'm still reading."
Yeah, 'cause they don't give it to you in advance. I had the same experience, yeah.
Yep.
So, but there's so many different categories. That's the interesting thing.
And there's new ones this year too. Every year, there's new ones. So there's, they're pushing fashion merchandising this year. So they're doing another virtual business challenge. So they're adding to the challenges that they already do, and having a, a fashion merchandising one this year.
It's an industry that's being challenged in real life and could use some fresh creative solutions and thoughts.
Well, I will definitely do it, Liz.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm much more able to do the regional, 'cause I usually stay in, in, to the awards and stuff, so I think that's easy. But the, the state one's just a little trickier for me sometimes, just 'cause it's a whole day that I really need to take.
It is a long day, yeah.
I, I wouldn't say I wouldn't do that, but that's, the, the district one's a lot easier for me to manage. Happy to help.
But it's a lot of, it's a lot of fun. They have a fabulous lunch afterwards, and then comedian presentation.
There's always some sort of entertainment while the judging, the scoring is happening.
So do, do the people who wanna be judges send you an email, or do you?
Yes, yes. I'll send out an alert that we're looking for judges. If you're interested, let me know.
Okay, so the question that I have for you on the request form, it says, "Have you made arrangements for the children?" And one of the questions is, "Have you made arrangements for the children that won't be attending?"
Yes.
You responded, "No." So what is, what do those kids usually do?
So if you don't make it past districts, you don't go to states.
Okay.
So that's why it's a, it's just a regular, they would just...
Because DECA is outside of the school debt.
Yes, because you have to compete and qualify to go to Boston in March, and then you have to compete and qualify to go to ICDC
Okay.
in April.
Well, you don't need to make any special arrangements for the kids that don't make it. They just go to school.
Nope, they, they would just stay by the door. Yeah, and then they, unless they went through an alternative track to get to ICDC, and in that case, yes, which... Yep, usually happens, a couple of kids get taken to the Leadership Academy in ICDC.
And have arrangements made for students that aren't able to financially go on the trip? What, what happens?
Yes, the fundraising. Yes, that's where fundraising comes in.
Okay, so say a child, the fundraising isn't enough either. Is there a, do we offer scholarships for the kids that do make it that can't?
DECA does offer, Mass DECA offers scholarships, and so does National DECA. So there's two avenues of getting scholarships. And historically, Mass DECA does not give out all of the money that they have earmarked to, for scholarships.
Oh, okay.
So.
And then the, the child just applies, like?
Mm-hmm, yep, they do an application process, just like they, they would.
Good.
And they show a need, and then it's awarded, because they don't want a needy child to not go because of...
Right, that was my concern too. Well, that's good.
Yep, yep.
And it, it actually isn't all that expensive. Like, when I look at this, especially the Boston trip, I know that it's not all included. But I know in years past, as you mentioned in here, that you would go to, you know, you would take into consideration the cost of the trip and not necessarily go to the top of the hub or things like that.
No, 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 no. And then when they buy their flights, they're buying them through, the, DECA's buying our flights. So there, it's a plane of DECA kids going down together. It's a group rate. We travel with other schools that are in our district, so. And the districts stay together at the hotels, so our entire district will be at the same hotel for both places.
And was it in Atlanta last year?
No.
Has it been in Atlanta?
It was in Anaheim, right?
It was, last year was in Anaheim. Next year, we'll be in Orlando. It could have been in Atlanta.
I thought that was when Michael won.
Yeah.
Remember when Michael?
It could have been.
I think you're right.
Yeah, and it's also been, it was in Nash, it was in Nashville.
Nashville was the year prior, so then it was Orlando, so then it could have been Atlanta the year, so four years ago.
That's great places, though.
Yeah.
To go and see.
Is it ever in Boston?
Yes, it has. I don't have to stay.
Not since I've, not since I've remem, remember it being in Boston. I don't know why that is. Honestly, probably cost, because there's 14,000 to 16,000 kids that are attending this. So you have to have the hotel space, and you have to have it close to the convention center, 'cause that's usually where they're housed. So, 'cause to house 16,000 kids with food and all of the breakout areas and different rooms, it really consumes... They outgrew the, the hotel attached to the Prudential Center two years ago, so now they have to be housed at two separate hotels because Mass DECA got so big. There's only so much room.
So notice they haven't picked New York, and they haven't picked Chicago.
Yeah, and I honestly think that that's probably why.
Living.
The, the cost of the hotels and being attached to a convention center.
And is that the week of April vacation?
Yeah, so this year, it falls, yeah, the last weekend of April vacation into the following week.
Oh, okay, so they'll miss the three days?
Yep, coming back from vacation, whereas the past several years, it's been they've missed the couple of days leading up to vacation.
Okay.
And come home during vacation.
Okay, so I can't go away. Me neither.
They're going away. Your children are going away.
All three go to DECA, so I'll be going without them.
Yeah, exactly. That's what I was gonna say.
You'd be a great chaperone.
There's an idea.
Here's the camera.
Okay, well, I'm only gonna make a motion to approve this as long as you come back and give us the wonderful news that our kids did so great.
Yes, absolutely.
No, I'm, I'm very proud of, of their accomplishments thus far. They've done a great job.
They always have.
Yep.
So I will make a motion to approve the DECA club's attendance at the January 11th, 2018 district competition from 7:00 AM to 3:30 PM at Merrimack College. Laurie, can I, I'm gonna do all these.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause we didn't do the Makerspace, I think because they, they're out of school.
They're, well, they're, the overnight field trips are the ones, overnight out of state.
Right, so not Merrimack.
Okay, so you don't want them in?
So you don't, you don't really need to.
Okay, make a motion to approve the DECA club's attendance at the March 8th to March 10th, 2018 state competition at the Boston Marriott, as well as the DECA club's attendance at the April 21st to 25th of 2018 international competition in Atlanta, Georgia, as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. You've taken on, on quite a lot this year. I was mentioning that to the superintendent last week. Good for you.
We'll see if she thinks at the end of the year, right, Liz?
I, you have...
Thank you, Liz.
Makerspace, this, everything.
Integration specialists.
Okay, then we have Caitlin Donovan here. You also have a field trip that you would like to... This isn't an overnight either.
Not an overnight, it's an out of state. That's probably why she's not.
So we've talked about this in the past?
Yep, yep, I was here last year for the same trip, so just a different batch of students.
And this is your alma mater, right?
Yeah, it is.
Yes.
Plymouth State.
Great. So you're expecting about six students?
Yeah, one more than last year.
And how do they, how do they get selected to go? Caitlin, is it self-selection or?
So I opened it up, I opened it up to the group, and I just asked who wa, who was interested. 'Cause I know it's kind of a tough time of year, especially the beginning of November. I know they're doing a lot of things, and to take them out of school for the day, I give them the option to apply, so. So six students expressed interest.
Okay.
So I can bring those students. Oh, sounds like a great experience.
And you're gonna have two parent chaperones, and they'll be driving the children?
Yeah, so I'll have to reach out to the students that are interested in going and check with those parents and gather some chaperone drivers.
Right, I think there's probably, we just will work with you, because there's probably some regulations around certain number of, amount of insurance that's covered on the cars and all of that, so.
Yeah, yeah, so I'll have to check in on that.
Yeah, so maybe we can check in with Suzanne.
Yeah.
Is this how we arranged it last year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I remember asking the carpooling question last year, so.
Yeah, that's always, that's always the big one. Yeah, yeah.
The answer hasn't changed.
Yeah, the students that went last year loved it. I was actually just rereading, 'cause I had them write like little testimonials of it, and they just had a great time. 'Cause I brought five seniors, so it was tough to bring, to reach out to the students this year, 'cause I didn't have them back to talk about their experience. So it'll be good, number, a few students that are interested are not seniors, so next year, they can talk about it and...
Well, you can bring one or two here with you.
Exactly. Yeah.
I know, that would be nice.
Yeah.
I'd love to hear how they, how they felt the experience was. So with this not being an overnight...
Out of state.
I mean...
It's out of state.
Oh, a lot of students.
New Hampshire, yeah.
I'm thinking...
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Lesser known.
But I don't see it in the north. For overnight and out of state field trip.
Right.
Right. What time are you leaving?
We leave around 7:30, right when the school's, school day starts. We get there about 9:00.
Okay.
So that's not too bad.
And then you come home by?
The concert ends around 8:30, so it'll be about 10 o'clock.
So it's a long day.
It's a, yeah, it's a jam-packed day.
It's not a competition, it's just a...
No, they perform with students. Yeah, it's a festival. They get to meet people from all over the region, which is great.
I'll make a motion to approve the, um... Make a motion to approve six students. Do we know that for sure?
That's the amount of students that have expressed interest.
Six students that will be attending on New England Coral Festival in Plymouth, at Plymouth State College on November 2nd, 2017, as presented.
So moved. Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. How's the year starting off for you?
It's great. It's nice for it to be year two.
I was gonna say, yes.
Year one is always tough.
Exactly. Well, thank you.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Now, we have a transportation update. I appreciate you giving us this update. We asked you to come, tell us how things were going after the first couple of weeks. It seems like you figured things out.
Well, we're, well, we're, we certainly spent some time thinking about it. So I tried to give you the most recent information on the counts, and then just as backup, these little color-coded, if you recall, when we talked the last time, we had said that the routes were originally put together based on eligible riders. But, you know, sometimes, even though they don't have a bus pass, we don't know that kids aren't gonna get on the bus anyway, so the first couple of weeks, the bus company did the routes as they were posted. Certainly, there were some glitches and some concerns that were expressed, that sometimes the buses got there too early, or they got there later. Despite the fact that we always say, you know, "Please plan on a five to 10-minute swing, especially at the end of the year when the routes are new." But I think there, there were some challenges with the, particularly with buses getting there sooner. So people could understand if they, you know, missed it 'cause it was late, but the sooner was kind of throwing people off. But as Cindy was explaining to me, that, you know, you don't, you, you set up the bus stops, and you would plan for a certain amount of time that it's gonna take you at each stop, and you would assume there's gonna be a little bit of traffic, particularly in some sections of town. But then, for whatever reason, sometimes there's, kids don't get on, there's no traffic, and then what are you gonna do? You know, you, you sort of still gotta run the route. So that, that was the explanation that I was given, so. So as I tried to do in your orange notes, was to explain how we attacked the problem. So I had a meeting with, as I said, with Cindy, and Cindy brought her safety supervisor, 'cause whenever I have any kind of question, I always say to Cindy, "Okay, what's your safety supervisor say about it?" You know, it's just another set of eyes. So she brought her safety... So she brought her safety supervisor, Laura participates because Laura and Barry really are the masters of that program. You know, so people come in with questions about buses, they can both get on, they both do a great job answering questions, getting the bus passes out. We actually had very few in, uh, you know, appeals this year in terms of people not being satisfied with a particular answer. Um, and I think that convenience bus definitely helped with that when we, we did that, because if you remember, people were really concerned about, you know, do I meet the mileage, don't I meet the mileage, I think I do, you think I don't, you know, I need the transportation. Um, but having the ability to do that seems to have sort of taken a lot of that away. Um, so what we did.
Is that process still the same, uh, where they go to Barry first?
Go to Barry first, yep.
And then if they don't agree or they wanna further that, then they go to you?
They come to me, that's right, that's how it usually works. Um, and Barry, you know, usually kind of holds the line, and then he knows that, you know, that I might, depending on the circumstances, I, you know, if, if there's a compelling argument, I might say something different. But we always talk ahead of time, we always make sure that, that he's in agreement, that the argument. You know, sometimes there'll be a situation where, um, somebody will, will need or wanna bus stop and, you know, we'll send the safety supervisor out and it has to do with, you know, can, the sightlines, you know, is it how, is it, is it a, is it a legitimate reason? We haven't identified as a safety zone, but is it a legitimate safety concern? If it is, we make the change, if it isn't, we say, you know, we're sorry, we're, we're not able to, we're not able to do it. And people have been very patient and understanding, um, as we've tried to do this. So, we, and Mike, I also brought Mike Anderson in because Mike knows the town inside and out. And I said, Mike, you know, every year we're dealing with this issue, there's got to be a way to look at this differently. Um, so basically, he went to the planning office and got me big maps of the town with all the streets, except some new streets, we decided the new development wasn't on it. And then I said to him, let's just think about it as if there's five main streets in town. East Main Street, West Main Street, Central Street, um, Andover Street and North Street. So what if we just take a color coded pen and we just color code all the streets that would go on this bus, that bus? Just to see if we could do some more neighborhood bus kinda concepts, as opposed to routes that sort of go across town and hit different neighborhoods. So, we, we did that. We brought it to the meeting, and then what's gonna happen now is Mike has another copy that he got and the bus company's actually gonna color code what, what the current routes look like. Then we're gonna compare the two together and see, maybe we're in agreement with most, and, but there, we may not be in agreement with all. Um, the goal would be then to pay attention to the, the issues that were raised, like how much time kids are on the bus, right? So how we went, how we attacked that, was we looked at the times and you, you know, I'm sure you had a chance to, as you looked at your packet, to look at them. You know, our expectation is, we'd love thirty minute bus runs, but forty-five is within the, within our standard of being reasonable. Um, Cindy says that the standard in the industry is not more than an hour. We think that's too long. At the beginning of the year, there were actually some routes that were running an hour by the time, you know, everything was getting shaken out. And that, that was very concerning to us, there was one bus, the bus two that was getting to school late every single day. So what we did is we spent the first, you know, three weeks sort of studying the issues, and then we identified what the big issues were. So, one of them had to do with what would happen if we took the stops out where we don't need them, right? What, what does that do to the times? And, um, it shrinks them potentially significantly. And so I showed you, you know, what comes out of what route, this was Laura's idea to color code, she knows I love color code, she did a great job on that. Um, but we're, Cindy basically, um, said, well, okay, beginning, and we're gonna, we're gonna start this after the, um, holiday, after the Columbus Day holiday. So we should let, we're gonna, our plan is to let parents know next week, so posting new, um, routes and times on the website. I'll do a blog about it, and then we would do the transition the fa- the Tuesday after, so people would, would know we're gonna be working with, with the new routes. So, we, we're, the first thing we're doing is we're eliminating all those stops that don't have children. So one route, for example, goes from what's posted as about a fifty-seven minute route, goes to thirty-one minutes. Now, we'll see if it, that's exactly what happens, but that's an example of the fact that we, we wanted to keep the routes as, as short as we could.
So the only question I have about that is, we've already determined that we legally are responsible, are required.
Yes.
To pick up children, even though they don't have the bus pass. So what happens if like a morning, there is, do they, does the parent call the bus company? I know in years past, cause my kids would be sporadic and they would, they said to me, oh, could you just make a phone call? Is that what?
Yeah, what, yeah, I, I think that's what parents would do, but generally speaking, now that it's three weeks into it, we're anticipating that that will happen very rarely, I mean.
Oh, and that would be the case, like if there was an emergency that the parents can't, so all they would do is just pick up the phone and say, my child is eligible. We don't have a bus pass, this is my address.
Right, we need to have bus transportation today.
Okay.
And, and we can always add stops back in, but it doesn't make sense to stop at stops where we know that no one's going to get on. Right, and, and certainly, I think if, if, if all of a sudden, uh, the parent, you know, decides that they do want the stop, well, then they just need to let us know that, it's easy enough for the bus to reinstate the stop.
But you'll communicate that, right?
Yeah, yes, that's gonna all be communicated.
I'm just talking more about that circumstance.
Yeah, circumstance, if you're eligible, you can always ride the bus.
And so the same, like if a child, the parent is like, you have to go on the bus today to get home, because I'm not gonna be home to pick you up. And the child gets on the bus, does the child then tell the bus driver, okay, you have to stop at twelve, ten E Street, because I'm here today?
No, I think the, the school would take care of that, you know, like Margaret and Hope and those people are waiting, you know, at the bus stop. I mean, honestly, I don't think that would happen. I, I, I feel like the parent would call the school, and that would be our expectation, and that's what we would reinforce with the, with the, um, with the parent, you know, we don't want kids just getting on the bus and not having any adult correspondence.
Elementary level, but middle, high school level, they might just say to the, the child.
I am gonna throw it out there, the parents should write a note, we, we would never know that. We would never know that a child needed a stop if we didn't get a note. So, if you can, anyone out there?
In cyber world.
Send a note, send a note.
Please send a note that you need that reinstated for that afternoon ride.
Right, yeah, it, this, and there's pl- there's room on all the buses, so it, it wouldn't be a problem if there were additional kids that needed to, to be.
Do you think we at one point have software that was determining our routes?
Uh, well, yes and no, I mean, the software can determine the routes, but the problem, what we're finding is that the software doesn't know what the routes are really like, like the software will send you down streets, there are no streets. Or, you know, or, or one ways, you know, so it doesn't know better, right? So that's why I said, we have to, so it's good to use it sort of as a general generic thing, but then the reality is, we need to talk to the bus company, the bus drivers, guys like Mike, people who know the streets, you know, really, really well.
You went to the old fashioned way and got the maps. Doing it yourself with magic markers, you know? I mean, remember Pam was looking into some.
Well, no, we got that, we got that software.
I know.
The software is really helpful to us in terms of, you know, keeping track of what kids, you know, are, are eligible for what routes. You know, Laura can go in and figure out whether somebody's eligible by, you know, the way the program is, is, is set. We can determine the distance from the school, so it, there's a lot of that, that takes away some of that objectivity. But, but in terms of the actual development of the routes, you know, they might do it as the crow flies. We, you know, we now know the roads better, well enough to, you know, kind of make tweaks as we need to. So the first thing was, is going to be to put post new times by taking off these, these, uh, streets that we know there are no stops, which will shorten the routes on every bus. The second thing, um, we did, we did actually get some information from the bus, from the, uh, police department today. They've been studying the situation at the Mill High School and just watching it, they, they took data. And, um, the note came from Lieutenant Hatch today that they don't think there is a need for a, um, for an officer to sort of be there because, uh, what they found in the six or seven data points that they used, um, that three of the buses go out toward the library, so they avoid that winter street, you know, um.
Light.
Yeah, the light, and that there, there was never a situation where, there, where the buses took, took any more than one and a half minutes to both get out, you know, and, and on their road, so. Yeah, I don't think that's, you know, an issue, we were talking, I think at the meeting about, you know, could they, could they, uh, change the timing of the light? Because the light is long, the timing is long when you're going up East Main. But, you know, when you're trying to pull out, that turns pretty quickly. Um, so guy's sense from his report was that it seemed that the kids get out within five minutes at the Mill High School and that was confirmed by the bus company, they said, yeah, they're, they're really good about it. Um, but, his sense was when they got out and they got to the intersection, they were having to wait, and that was delaying.
Well, I think we were wondering what could possibly account for these delays, and that just looked like something that could be.
We didn't change the middle high school routes significantly, and last year, most of those buses were at the, at the Pembroke, you know, at dismissal or very shortly after. If you look at some of these times, you notice that it's, sometimes it's ten of, three o'clock. And that certainly makes it harder to get the kids home, you know, earlier. So, the goal was to get them out at the middle high school, get those routes done as quickly as possible, and we are eliminating some. You saw the chart here for, for middle school as well, middle high school, so that should, you know, account for maybe that five to seven minute swing that we're hoping to gain back. Um, the goal would be to then load the, the buses like we're doing as quickly as we can at Pembroke and get those kids on the road. Um, so that, that middle high school issue does not appear to be the issue that we might have thought it was when we met. Um, bus two is the convenience run, so they take, take the kids and then they come back and then they go and get the other children, which is like two or three stops, one of which is that stop at Pearlie. Um, Margaret is, at the end of the day, is responsible for about twenty, I'm gonna say twenty, twenty-five kids that, you know, are the convenience kids that, and they're, and those kids, if you look at the chart, they're getting home fairly late, and they were getting in late.
Yeah.
So, um, what we believe is a, a good solution at this point is, is to take that bus and just make it one bus. Because the, the second run or the convenience run is a short, quick, you know, you're going to some, it's not like you're doing two whole runs, which would make the run very long. So, there's, there, there'll be less than sixty kids on the bus if we do the consolidation, which we still feel, you know, that's an appropriate, you know, um, amount of children, and it would, it'll save supervision at the school. You know, everybody will get on the bus, you know, in a timely manner. The third ish, uh, no, sorry, the fourth issue, um.
Can I just ask?
Yes, of course.
When does that bus leave, uh, Pembroke?
Which bus?
The, uh, bus two, the convenience bus.
Um, well, let's look at what it says here, bus.
Bus two, I'm looking.
Okay, where is bus two?
So, two fifty-three?
Right, and then.
And then the, the one, three fifty-eight is the longest that someone is on that bus.
Right.
Right?
Right, that's what I think it's, yeah, that's how I'm reading it. So we're, we're thinking that this way, it'll, you know, again, the hope is that it's one run now. We're still accounting for the convenience kids, you still gotta come to Pearlie, right? But, then that'll be, I believe that'll be the last stop too.
Because that bus two drops off at the first run, cause I see it go out when I'm driving in.
Yeah.
At like five, ten after eight is when it's heading back out for the second.
Right, right.
So, and then, like, it'll make it back, I don't know, we see it come back, like, as the kids are lining up?
Yeah.
Generally, so.
Yeah, that's the typical.
Right.
Yeah, so that's why we're hoping.
Lining up to go in.
So that's why we're hoping that if we could, if it shaves a couple of stuff, yeah, that that might, that that might, that might help. And at the end of the day, it will definitely help, because now there won't be a pool of kids kinda sitting there waiting, you know, they'll, they'll be on the bus, but it, you know, it'll be, we think, we're gonna try it, we think it, it makes sense to do it. Um, and then, there, there is a route, the, the one, that bus three, that goes out to Old Jacobs Road. So, um, we looked at the, we looked at that and we trying to figure out, like, why would, why was it so much longer in many ways than the others? So what, what we did is we looked at the, um, Mill High School routes and looked, and that, so the streets are not the same on the middle high school as they were, um, uh, in the, uh, elementary, so what we're going to do is we're taking out a section of, 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 um, uh, we're going up to Thurlow, we're not going, we're, we're taking out Amber, there's like twelve, there's twelve or fifteen kids that'll be affected by this. But it'll, it'll shorten that route. Um, so, and those kids are gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna be picked up in a, on the, on the route that seems to make more, we think seems to make more sense. To them.
They'll be bus one instead of bus three.
So they'll be bus one instead of bus three. And then there was a very short little, Molton and Monroe, there was a stop, I think it was on, they were on bus four. But, when Cindy looked at it, she said, you know, they could just go on, bus five is fine in terms of its, um, ridership. So, she said it makes more sense where the bus actually, uh, starts, to just go and grab those kids that are in that neighborhood and then, you know, go on its route rather than add it to the bus four, which doesn't, doesn't seem to make sense. Bus four has the most kids, so we thought that that shift would, would also make sense. And then, as I said in number six, the one issue we didn't, we weren't able to completely solve here is this first on, first off thing. And partly, the reason we didn't take it on is because it's three out of the five buses. And when you, when you do the reverse, and it doesn't make sense to do the reverse at the end of the day, it makes sense to do the reverse at the beginning of the day. But when you do it, it, it is a swing of anywhere between twenty and forty minutes for, for families. And so we felt that at this point in time, to affect that many families by that much time was probably not gonna be the best, the best approach, as long as we could shorten the routes for everyone. So, I, I think that part of the issue of the first on, first off is fairness, I understand that, and we aren't able. First on, last off, is fairness, and so we don't address that in this. But the second is, part of the issue is because the kids are on the bus for so long. So if we can make sure the kids aren't on the bus as long, fully understanding that what we will try to do, um, is when we're building the routes for next year, which we really want to build those routes in the spring, not in the summer. I don't really wanna deal with this in another year. So if we take a look at these routes and we can figure out ways to sort of do them in a little bit more coordinated way by sort of neighborhoods or areas of town, we might be able to take a look at it and say, is there a way to, to think about that as we're building the routes?
Or you could just switch it every other year.
Or switch it every other year.
Fairness.
Yeah, because I think that the hard part is, um.
Sounds like a good idea.
What we don't wanna do, but what we don't wanna do is, you know, you know, I guess, I guess we, we wanna be careful that we look at what's best for all, the majority of kids. I, I understand that, that some people, you know, doesn't affect them in the way that they are happy, and I get it, totally get it. But, you know, as Cindy said, we also have to make sure that if we're committed to efficiency as well, right? So, for example, when I drew my pictures, cause I'm visual, of what, if we change, leave bus three, you can go, so if you started out at Pearlie and you just went and picked everybody up, got to Old Jacobs, and then drove everybody to the school, you're going through the traffic twice, so when you have all the kids on the bus, you, it's gonna take you an extra five to ten minutes to go back with everybody on the bus, whereas that adds to the overall length of the route. Yes, it's fair to the people who, who, you know, feel that they wanna do this, this switch, but it, that doesn't necessarily help the route as a whole, and everyone on the route as a whole.
But technically, the traffic, it's not the same traffic.
It's not the same traffic, but coming back, they're worried about coming back through it, not necessarily going out through it, but coming back through it. So, but that doesn't mean that in the future, we won't, we won't do that or try to do that. But we're concerned about at this point in time, impact, if it was one bus, it might be different, but it's three out of the five. And, um.
So it's not just the Old Jacobs Road?
It's not just the Old Jacobs Road, there's three out of the five routes are the first on, last off. Just because of the nature of, the fact that the bus company tells us that that's sort of the standard operating procedure. You know, you, you start, you go out to the first, to the farthest stop, and then you work your way in, and then you do the opposite in the afternoon. Again, they work for us, you know, they'll work with us, and Cindy's really been great, I mean, I was, I thought it was a very productive meeting. I think we tried to address all the issues that had been brought to our attention. Um, and I'm hoping that we've addressed the majority of them. Like I said, the only one I really couldn't completely address was that, you know, the last on.
Right.
For, wait, how do I, I get that first on, last off, I get that wrong every time.
Well, I was, well, I was just gonna say, so the main reason that we're not looking at it this year is because we're. is because we're changing some kids on, put them on different routes.
That's right, we're shifting some kids, yeah.
And because if they were first on, or say they were last on and then you switched them at this point in the year, it would upset their schedule by a half hour.
Well, what would happen is that, 'cause I, I literally looked at, picked addresses and said, alright, you know, right now, they're getting on here and they're getting off here. What happens if we reverse it? And in some cases, it's thirty to forty minutes. So.
So, if they got a bus, say, at eight fifteen, then they would be getting a bus really at seven forty-five.
Or in that ballpark. But, it also affects all those people in the, in the middle too, you know? So, again, you know, we see what happens when we change bus times, 'cause it impact, you know, you have a lot of working families and, you know, if it was a five-minute swing, even if it was a ten-minute swing, but it's not for most people. It's pretty significant. And it's three out of the five buses. So, you know, uh, we thought the best thing to do would be to try to figure out how we can shorten the routes for all the kids on all the buses. And then, maybe, and then for that Old Jacobs Road situation, to remove them having to stop in one whole area, which should make that a little less crazy.
So, but perhaps at the beginning of next, or in the summer or in the spring, whenever we do the routes.
Yes.
That might be something to look at.
We will look at it.
So, because ag- again, if you start the year knowing, this is my time at the bus stop, people are more likely to.
Yeah.
Understand it.
Yes. And, and I really wanna be able to explain this spring to people. This is how we're creating the routes for next year, the, you know, these are the routes. You know, this is, you know, I, I, I think that's just gonna be, 'cause I don't, I think last year, we had a lot of issues. This year, we had far few issues, far fewer issues. And I just anticipate that we, if we do this the way we, I think we can do it, we should have even fewer issues. That would be really good.
Another year or two, we'll have no issues.
I hope, I, Suzanne, I love that. I love that way of thinking.
We're just reducing it as we go.
I love that way of thinking.
I know that Cindy says that the industry standard is one hour. I wonder how many.
No more than one hour.
Right. No more, I know. I wonder how many of her communities that her company services has students on there for one hour.
No, she'll, she'll tell you, not at all. But, she'll also tell you that those, all those communities have more buses. 'Cause remember I told you, like, she used Topsfield as an example and said, we transfer, we transport about as many kids in Topsfield as we do in Georgetown, but we have seven buses. In Georgetown, we have five. Um, and in some communities, and I mean, the funny thing in this town.
The size of the town.
The funny thing in this town is when there were fewer kids in the schools, back in the day when Mike was here and some of the other folks that talk about, you know, their, their experience with buses, they remember there being ten buses. Ten, actual, physically ten buses. So, you, you know, you can imagine that the, the routes were shorter, but the number of kids would also be less, right? So, we have to do a cost benefit of analysis in our, you know, in the district and say, okay, well, we could add more buses to get shorter routes, but then we're gonna have, you see the counts, I mean, in some cases, there's nineteen kids in the afternoon on a bus, right? So, we don't wanna be running buses with, you know, no kids.
Few kids.
So, but that, you know, hopefully that's an update for you. I will continue to keep you posted. But, I just wanted you to know, we are planning to, um, notify, um, parents, uh, with, that the new times are gonna be posted and then begin the new routes and hopefully.
And so, how are you gonna communicate that?
Um, we are gonna, well, I'm gonna do a blog on that and we're gonna, um, we're gonna post, Margaret's gonna put in her this week, watch, she already mentioned it at her pin night. Um, that the buses were being looked at and that, that people should, you know, watch the website next. We'll do it on Face, you know, put it on Facebook, new routes are posted with times. And we figured, if we did it next week, then we, it gives them at least, you know, partial, a partial week to, to make adjustments. 'Cause for, and, and they think the bus we were actually, the Amber, Amber, I think we were actually gonna send a, a letter to, to those people directly, that their bus, that their bus was, you know, was gonna be shifted.
So, then, if that goes into effect then, can we have like an update like this, like in a month with the numbers and the times?
Sure.
That would be good.
Well, and typically, the challenges are the Pembroke routes, right?
Yes.
You're not getting a lot of feedback of there being challenges.
Um, Peter, you, you don't hear any things about the buses, do you? Do, you, you, no, no. I mean, I, I tell you, they really kinda go off without a hitch. Those kids get out there and they're, they're gone in five minutes. It's pretty impressive, actually.
Pretty simple. Get on it or you walk.
Yeah.
So, Cal, I'd really be interested to see how many minutes this shaves off.
Yeah, I will too, yeah.
That would be good. 'Cause it could open the door for other things later.
And most of those stops that you're taking off.
Yeah.
Seem to be like specific addresses. Most of them.
Yes, in some cases, that, because there was a qualifying student there.
Right. Uh, there are some that are like at the corner of.
Yes.
Which would be multiple students, potentially.
Potentially, yeah.
Most of them are just one.
One stop. But, you know, when, every time you stop the bus, like Cindy said, every time you stop the bus, it's a three, you know, two to three minute, you know? So, if you, you know, if you have, you shave off seven stops, you know, that's almost fifteen minutes, you know, fourteen, fifteen minutes. So, you know, we'll, we'll see, you know? But, you know, I think, I think we, you know, we were, tried to be diligent to actually think about what are the problems we're trying to solve? And then, is there a way to, to take a look at it? And I think everybody really tried to put their heads together and come up with a solution then. And, and, you know, I always say to people, if you have a concern or a question, you know, bring it to Barry's attention, you know, or, or copy me and then, you know, we will try to, to work with you. And sometimes I meet with people and I just explain to them all of the different things we're doing. They're like, oh, okay, you know what, we'll be alright then. You know, because sometimes they just don't know, you know? People don't know how complicated it, it can be. But, I think at this point, we're just thinking, based on what we saw last year and what we've seen in the past, if we now say to people, we're switching, you know, we're three out, three of these whole buses are switching times right now, that, that will create angst that we might not need because if the times are reasonable, we don't think people are gonna be as upset. But.
I think, I think these look, I think these look good and I think you can tell that a lot of thought went into it. I, I feel confident that it will work.
I hope so.
And, and the good thing is, is it's only a little over a month into the school year.
Right.
So, it's not like.
That's right. Last year, remember, it was January and we were changing.
We're addressing it quickly and. So, I, I think it'll, it'll go well.
Yeah, and I think we're trying to figure out ways to constantly address the issue of, we wanna build the, we, we wanna build the routes around the people who are gonna ride. And I think that our experience has told us that our, shows us that our buses are not full. So, you know, even though, like I showed you at the beginning of the year, you know, you might have a bus that's got ninety-five eligible kids. You know, thirty kids are riding, right? So, even, even if we built it around the kids who say they wanna ride, the, even if eligible kids decide they want to, we're still not gonna have a packed bus, right? So, I think that's what we're talking about next year, is trying to figure out, how can we get this registration process down so that, you know, and I think you had some ideas, Michael, you know, that we could, that we could take a look at. Um, to, to be as efficient as possible so that we really can build these routes. If we, if we have these neighborhood things that we can figure out, like, we still have wiggle room as to if kids register even late, there's still gonna be room on the bus for them, is how we're.
It's a lot easier to have one, one student, you know, I guess, than still be adding thirty kids.
That's right. Yeah. So, we just wanna work, have, impress upon parents, again, you know, we just need you to complete the registration, you know, in a timely way so that we can make sure that we can do our buses. But, but thank you for your, your patience and your support on it. You know, I, I know it's very frustrating and disappointing when, you know, we, here in the Facebook page and we see people come up and talk to all of us and tell us how, you know, frustrated they are with the buses. Believe me, I'm, I'm in that camp. But, you know, I, I think, you know, this year was better than last and I think, you know, going forward, I think we've learned some things about, you know, what's important and, and where we have flexibility, so.
Well, thank you for putting so much time and effort and thought and focus on this very.
Well, I have a good team.
Important, yes. Yes, I know you do. Issue.
Thank you though.
So, we have, um, superintendent goals we wanted to talk about.
Yes.
So, on that committee is Cheryl and Suzanne?
I think so. Yes.
Yeah. Yes. Okay, so we want to, um, get an idea of what.
We haven't met yet.
Yeah.
No. So, I think we wanted to know, 'cause we'll meet and then we'll go, but if, if there were any general, um, thoughts that individual committee members had, that they wanted to just sort of throw on the table, then we can formulate goals, you know, around those if, if there's consensus of the group. You know, so I think that's what we just wanted to tonight, was that we don't need to write the goals, we just wanna, are their general ideas.
So, would it be best to email those?
Yeah, yeah. We can certainly do that.
And we can take a couple of, a day or two to, to think about it.
'Cause I don't think we have a meeting yet, do we?
No, there's nothing on the, on the books.
Okay. Well, that's fine.
That's good.
Yeah. So, I mean, maybe what we can do is maybe meet sometime next week, do you think? And we will, we can look at the doodle or even the beginning of the following week.
Okay.
Um, I just have those little days that I met at three P M.
Okay, so let's do our, our little, um.
Doodle.
Doodle.
Mm-hmm. So, then if the rest of the committee, if you wanted to just think over the, you know, by Monday, if we could shoot, um, them an email, if you have any specifics that you'd like to.
That'd be super.
That would be good.
And I have some ideas based on comments that people had made before, you know, like a few suggestions that you would have when we did the review, so. We can, I can throw those on the table too.
Okay, um, that was a very nice letter too, I just wanted to say, from Mr. Michael Kelly. Yeah, it was very nice. I took the time to do that.
And then, and then this, you know, this came from, do you remember Mr. Boynton?
Yeah.
So, apparently, he has written this and he's given copies, I gave you copies of it, but there, he has little found copies, you know, uh, to the Historic Society and they're, they're selling them for like a fundraiser. But, I shared it with, uh, Peter, you know, Peter wanted to put it in his library, you know, copies of it in his library because, you know, it's really kind of fun to look back, you know, I mean, I enjoyed reading it and, you know, it's a different era, you know? But, I thought it was very kind of him to, you know, send us a copy and, you know, share it with us. Yeah, he's, he's a very nice Mr. Boynton and he's, and he's, uh.
Well, he's very, um, ener, he, he has a lot of great memories.
Yep, he does.
Of Georgetown and, and that's, and he loves to talk about it, which I think is great.
Yeah.
Nice.
Yeah. It's important to preserve. I mean, if you don't talk about it, then people don't know about it.
That's right. So, that's what I loved about it. And when I give tours of Pearlie School, like, peo, classes will call me and say, oh, you know, I've got the class of fifty-six, you know, having our reunion, you know, I say, well, I'll come by, you know, come by on Saturday, 'cause usually it's over a weekend and then I'll take them through. And I love hearing the stories, 'cause it, you know, they'll say, oh, this is where, you know, the principal's office was, this is where I had sixth grade science, you know, this is.
It's funny, they always say, that's the first thing you hear people say is.
Principal's office.
And the nurse's office. I remember Mark Perry and Perry talking about it too, the different times he's been in there.
And then the fact that there used to be a stage up in the library, there was that, 'cause if you, if you up there and you look, you will see the, the sort of, uh, frame of the stage. So, they tell, you know, they talk about that and the old linoleum floor in the gym, you know, that, when it, when it used to get wet, flood. Started floating around.
Flooding memories.
So, yeah.
Asbestos linoleum.
I know. Well, Mr. Boynton Senior, when he, he was in his nineties, he used to come and talk to the third graders at Pembroke.
That's amazing.
About what his experiences.
Oh, that's great.
That is great.
Yeah, that is.
He lived to one hundred and three.
Awesome.
Well, that's nice. That was very nice of you to do that.
And what is the fundraiser for? Do you know?
Uh, for the Historical Society of.
That's nice.
Yeah. See, everybody does fundraisers.
Yes.
What you need to do.
True, nowadays, yeah.
Okay, um, wanna talk about the revolving accounts?
Sure.
I don't really, that wasn't really, that wasn't really a question.
Which we like to know. I think.
Well, here comes Michael.
I saw some highlights.
I, I have one question and I, and I just think it's more the way I'm reading your sentence. Um, in athletics, thus far, thus far, we've collected eighty-nine thousand dollars, which is roughly seventy-five percent of total expected, of to, of fall sports.
For the fall, yes, for the fall, yep.
Because people can go on installments.
Yes, and we've collected everything except the last install.
So, that's expected because we know how people.
Yep, there's several families, you know, that still have one more payment.
Right.
But, I wanted to let you know how many scholarships, 'cause you.
Thank you. That was the only question that I had.
Thank, I, I just wanna. I just wanna thank you very much for putting this together. I mean, I, you know, think it's important to, to be aware of, of what's going on with these. Um, so, I just was wondering, it's, in the athletic, my question is also about the athletic revolving account. Um, twenty-four thousand dollars is earmarked for various sport fundraisers.
So, those are those, um, fundraisers for the different sports, but it goes into the athletic revolving, it's not in a separate account? So, we have to kinda pull those out from the balance.
So, if soccer, if soccer, yeah, soccer does a fundraiser for soccer.
Yep.
It goes into the athletic revolving account earmarked for soccer.
But she keeps, Suzanne keeps tracking how much.
It's just not like for uniforms and things like that?
Whatever the soccer.
Whatever the different sports teams decide they wanna spend it on.
But it's not like available to the whole athletic, you know, like, like football couldn't access that unless we made a transfer, you know? But, but it's.
Now, what happens if it's not used?
It just stays there.
It just stays there.
Yeah, it's usually used.
It's kinda like the conversation we had about foods, remember? We said there was that balance that the parents put on account.
Right.
And at the end of the year, we couldn't count that as if it was our revenue. We had to basically set that aside, 'cause if every parent decided they wanted their money.
Right.
We, we have to give it back.
Right. And, and parents also count on it to be in their child's account for the following year.
Correct.
But, with these.
This is just the different sports.
But like, Michael must have done a soccer fundraiser.
Actually, he hasn't.
Oh, the girl soccer.
Uh, flatbreads?
And.
Oh, yes.
Yes, he did a flatbread one.
I apologize.
Yeah, so that money would go into.
No, I think the proceeds, certain, certain percentage of the proceeds from flatbreads went to boy soccer.
Right.
And it gets deposited in that account.
So, this would go into this, okay.
Yeah. Like when they sell the cards, like for the girl soccer.
Right.
That money goes in here.
It's just all housed in the revolving account.
And she keep, Suzanne keeps track of it, so she knows she doesn't, so she doesn't spend it on.
In opposed to where it used to be.
Makes me twitch a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, prior to me coming, I think you.
It was in the, yeah, it was in the student activity account.
Coming in, or is this money you anticipate going out?
That is in.
That's already.
That's in, it's there.
Right, right.
We expect it being spent.
So, but not.
Or it's saved.
So, like if twenty-four thousand, if, if fifteen thousand, but if fifteen thousand of that came from selling those cards.
Right.
For the girl soccer.
Yes.
Then the girl soccer can say, I want that fifteen thousand dollars now because we're gonna buy nets, balls, whatever.
Right.
Right.
Okay, okay.
But, so speaking of.
So, it's for the team.
Speaking of athletics, are we any closer to a trainer?
Well, Guy is pounding the pavement on that. Um, he's continuing to work with different agencies. The problem is, we don't need as many hours. Like Triton had no trouble getting a trainer because they were, they opted to full-time hours. It's hard to get part-time trainers.
Wow.
It's hard to get, Guy, he's been working, but he's been working.
So, what did they, what did they, how did they do it full-time? Like, so the hours might be.
They, they just, they gave, they gave the agency, 'cause they didn't, they couldn't find anybody to hire themselves, you know? So, they worked with an agency, just like when we worked with Christine. She worked for an agency, right? So, Guy worked with her, but she, but she, they would allow us to have fourteen hours with her and they gave us a really good rate. When Christine left, they insisted that we go up to twenty-five hours and they doubled the rate. So, that's why we didn't go back to them. That's why we didn't go back to them. So, that's why Guy's been, so Guy's approached, um, different colleges in the area that we know have programs to see if they could suggest and, and publicize that we're looking for a part-time trainer. The problem is, the schedule's not great for most people, right? I mean, you're talking about afternoons, you're talking three o'clock, you're talking about some evenings, but, you know. Saturdays, you know, so it's, I'm sure we're gonna find one eventually, but in the meantime, you know, we've, we're using our, our two E M Ts and the fire department for, you know, the amb, or the ambulance. Um, but yeah, we're not giving up on it.
M I A A protocols.
Yeah, that's, that was my next question, because I heard a couple of parents, um, today saying that. They was, they were saying, I wonder if that's all, you know, in the up and up, but I'm.
Guy researched that. Guy researched.
Well, we came to it. Well, we came to it, as long as they have the E M T.
Has to be an E M T.
It has to be, I don't think we'd put the kids at risk.
Well, we we, Guy researched it, cause I asked him, well, what if we had one of our, what if we had a nurse who wanted, who who, you know, cause it's first aid we pretty much need. Although we certainly would need to have kids taped periodically.
A trainer knows more about the taping of, you know, shin splints and whatever.
Tape kids, so what, you know, he's he's been taping, he's been taping some kids when they've needed it. But um, that is definitely a gap, you know, that an E M T can't do. But generally speaking, what you need the E M T there for is if someone gets hurt, somebody who, you know, can do first aid, who knows how all that works. And so M I A said, yes, you can have an E M T, um, but they certainly, you know, everybody wants a trainer, so.
Can we ask Guy, um, I don't know how he would communicate it, but can he send something out? Like maybe in morning announcements, just telling people that, because it just seems like.
Telling people that.
We don't, you know, Christine is, was the trainer, we're looking for a trainer, but we are.
We make I R M I A.
Yeah, we we have our E M T. Yeah, just because it just seems that people, not all athletic, the parents of the athletes know know that.
Okay.
So the best way to get the communication out.
Out there, so that it squashes the rumors, you know.
That would be good communication.
Can we do that? Maybe in the morning announcements, so.
All right, if we find a way to do it.
And then maybe somebody might know of a trainer.
Right, right.
Well, that's how we found, that's how we found a couple of coaches, is people, you know, is networking.
Yeah.
Did that enter your question pan?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, let's see, wait a minute. It's just we're doing well with the technology revolving account, with the iPad initiative. So, well, all right. How, I mean, is our our choice account, is, are these healthy relative, are these adequate numbers?
Are they adequate?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna cover our expenses.
We have, we have, we did get less kids than, and we do have less children than we anticipated that we wanted to do, so. It's pretty tight choice. So hopefully everyone we have.
Stays low here.
But we are able to meet our obligations.
So far.
So far.
And part of it we paid for stuff last year, the curriculum was originally budgeted in choice, this year we paid for it at the end of last year.
Right, but we had lost a few children too last year. And then we had a few graduate and we only got seven, I think.
Seven out of the fifteen slots, is that correct?
Yes.
In in ninth grade, right? I think, I thought we, I thought, I thought we opened six, six middle, that's right, we opened six and then fifteen. And I think we got almost all as six, but we didn't get as many ninth graders as we thought we were gonna get.
So we got seven, seven new.
But, so my question is.
What's your question, Suzanne?
So we have this number, this fifteen, and you didn't get as many ninth graders. Why not tenth grade or eleventh grade?
Well.
And I know, you know, you wanna keep the numbers down, but you've already lost a number of ninth grader, well. So therefore, the classes got smaller for tenth, eleventh and twelfth grade, so the the size of the classes that started out eighth grade, you know. Let's just say it was a hundred, X amount of people went to private schools, we got some choice, but not enough choice, so why wouldn't you do, open it up to the rest?
In the past, what we've done is we we have kind of done ninth and tenth grade, we've said, you know, X amount of slots, ninth and tenth grade. Um, but sometimes we look at the tenth grade number and say, eh, you know, based on the kids that are in tenth grade, the numbers, we don't really wanna add anymore. This year, we thought we were gonna get, our past history has told us that we usually have to get all the ninth graders that we think we're going to. And sometimes, sometimes with tenth grade, we usually don't take anybody higher unless there's a really compelling reason. If they're a senior, we'll often allow them to stay, but generally, we don't wanna buy problems in other places. And what our experience has told us is that if you're a junior and you're changing schools, there's usually a reason for it. Sometimes we'll get a school that'll call and say, look, there's been this issue with this child, it's not that child's problem, it really is just circumstances, they're a great kid. You know, if we can help, maybe we would, but generally speaking, our experience has been different.
It's also harder for eleventh graders to adjust to a complete, a whole new school community than it is at ninth grade. Ninth grade is kind of a natural time for a child to adjust to a new school community, at least in our, this culture.
I'm just saying that if we get.
Eleventh grade is hard.
Tenth grade, I think is, I think that's been our experience, right, Peter, we want, tenth grade is has been okay. And you can still have enough years to get all your graduation requirements in and.
But we also talked too about the teachers not being able to write recommendations for these kids if they're new.
Factor too.
You know, if they come in eleventh or twelfth grade, that's difficult.
It's hard, when you come in beyond the sophomore year, it's hard to get all the graduation requirements. And we have unique graduation requirements that that kids have to take. They, we don't, we won't rank them, because we don't do G P As if you aren't here by the sophomore year. Um, and the adjustment period is very difficult for them. I mean, the ninth grade is natural because it's, it's almost like going to a private school for them. So it's a new school, they have their full high school experience.
Right, and then I think too, we don't, as far as choice is concerned, we don't wanna. We don't wanna make it like we are doing it for the money, and I think if, okay, we don't get, all right, we want fifteen kids in ninth grade, but we don't get it, so we'll open up some in tenth. And if we don't get that, we'll open, you know, I just, I just think that that would be sending the wrong message too.
So that's why I think when we sit down as an administrative team and we look and we say, all right, you know, where do we think it, we can take kids? We do consider a lot of factors, you know, such as the class itself, you know. Sometimes you have high, high needs in in some classes, or, you know, so there's all the factors Peter just talked about, there's a lot of things that we. We have open tenth grade slots, but generally, we we haven't really, extenuating circumstances for eleven and twelve, maybe, we would talk about it. But generally speaking, we don't open them up for all the reasons Peter just said.
It is quite a difference though, money-wise, what we're looking at, so. I I'm thankful that we did do the per- that made made the changes.
We had to take those things out of the, out of the revolving account, we wouldn't.
That's more money in that account than there was in April.
Right, the one thing that that I'm looking at that account, cause I'm, I'm, the only thing that, we had talked about the N I S C visit coming out of that money. It's a one-shot deal, but I, you know, right now, I don't know that that balance covers that, so that that is something that we are gonna have to think about.
But we still get.
Not to say that we can't solve.
Money for a year though.
Yeah, we we will, I just wanna make sure we.
It will be close, cause it all depends on when N I S C comes in as as well, you know.
Well, why don't we have like, um, it's because of hotels and things like that.
We, I mean, Peter, in terms of like planning for the N I S C visit, in terms of getting like an actual budget, like knowing like. Like what's, what is the process that will follow to determine that, like when will we determine like where they're gonna stay and and that kinda stuff? I know, I know Colin and Peter are.
We're going to a, a conference from them for schools that are having spring visits and they did the end of October and November, so.
Okay.
Know then, they should go through all that.
All right.
And then who makes all those arrangements, your secretary then starts? Oh, okay, they they figure out how many people will be coming and then figure out the.
Where we're gonna put them.
Where do you put them, we don't have hotels in Georgetown.
Do you remember where they stayed the last time?
No, no, they stayed at the Peabody, Peabody Mary, I think.
I don't know about that place in in um.
Fairfield.
Fairfield.
Oh, yeah, Jamesbury.
Berry.
Oh, oh, yeah, that's closest.
There's two, there's two.
It has to have food.
They have, you can't just put them anywhere.
Yeah, they have to have like.
They have to have a conference room.
Big workroom for them, they have, so the the hotel has.
You have to have food delivered to them.
Fairfield has breakfast.
Yeah. So.
Have like midnight snacks.
Yeah, I didn't mean to open the Pandora's box, but I was just curious about the timing of it, yeah. So, so we can, we can do some things, like maybe have P T A help with, you know, some of the snacks. I mean, there's things we can do, but I just, well, they'll develop a steering committee, they'll develop a budget and we'll, then we'll have a better sense to know how.
Well, we talked about too, the caf- the food services.
And food service, looking at that too, yeah.
So the the food services um balance looks good, looks healthy.
It's doing pretty well, I mean, we had some pretty big um expenses at the beginning of the year, obviously for the coffee shop. Um, stuff that we just didn't have, you know, in our inventory.
Yeah.
Um, he did give me a a breakdown of the exact same numbers last year to this year for the um meals. And it's increased about two percent, so, you know, he's anticipating it to keep going, but um, that was, you know, so far.
Yep.
Peter, how is that going, how's that coffee shop going? Are teachers taking it, you know, what's?
He wants it open more.
I I think um, it's uh, not a lot of people us- utilizing it in the morning.
Really?
Yeah, the numbers are low.
I think they're buying just coffee and they're not buying as many breakfasts as we anticipated and, you know, wanted them to. So trying to change that.
Most, most kids that, uh, the majority of kids that go in there are middle school kids. Um, high school kids just don't come to school that early.
My, no.
I think, I think Michael goes in to get them, I don't know.
When you say up two percent, do you mean like participation is up two percent or like revenue, okay.
Or just meals, it just some these meals, yeah, reimbursable meals.
The um, the deli bar is is the biggest hit.
Yeah.
The paninis and, yeah.
Yeah, my my son is buying a lot of those, I tell you, his expenditures are going up more than two percent.
He's selling more a- à la carte, but so he's seeing, you know, higher increases in some, but not in everything.
He said the vending machines were um going well, he said the vending machines were going well.
Good, good, good.
And how about at Pembroke?
Need a little more time.
Yeah, I wasn't even gonna ask about this, cause I just figured this is the first month, I'd be more interested to hear about this next month, you see, you know, when things have kind of.
I think she's saying that two percent is across the board, right, including Pembroke?
Yes.
Yeah.
And people are paying for their lunches?
Yes, yeah. I sent out about twenty-two letters to all the old people.
Still chasing some of the old debt.
Probably got like five people paying full, so.
I don't know how many letters.
Better than none.
Twenty-two, it's a quarter.
But we have pursued, you know, taking people to small claims court.
I'm trying not to.
We try not to, but.
It's the next step.
But I do think that the system now is, the system that's in place now.
Oh, definitely better.
We're catching, you know, keeping a better track of them.
We're much better, year over year, it's much better than, there's a lot of old stuff that we've kinda lost, realistically.
Right.
Yeah, several families li- like just left.
Moved out of town, yeah.
Yep.
Good.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Great. Did anybody else have any questions? No, okay. Um, so we need to uh make an increase in the middle school student activity account. Um, so I will make a motion to increase the Pembroke Student Activity Account, I'll do, yeah. Pembroke Student Activity Account from ten thousand dollars to thirty thousand dollars for the period of November first through November thirtieth of twenty seventeen.
Second.
Uh, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then uh make a motion to increase the middle school student activity account from ten thousand dollars to twenty thousand dollars. For the period of May first to May thirty-first of twenty eighteen.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we also uh have some information regarding our copy release. So we're going in, uh, entering into the three-year lease for the, that's in the business office, the copy machine. Um, so make a motion to approve the three-year lease to Conica Minolta Business Solutions in the total amount of eleven thousand four hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty cents. For the business office copy machine.
Eleven four ninety-one twenty.
Oh, wouldn't I just say?
You're up for twenty cents.
Oh.
Not that that is a huge difference.
Which one's right?
It's the twenty cents.
The twenty, eleven thousand four ninety-one.
The payment has a forty cent in it, maybe we'll look at that.
Okay.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And this next um, next item, the approval of the quilting club, I think this was interesting.
The what?
Quilting club.
Quilting club.
Oh, the quilting. Kids were interested in a quilting club, that's great.
That's cool.
All ready to go, waiting for you.
That's good, and and we have someone.
They actually have sewing machines from the Makerspace.
Yeah, that's, that's great, but we have someone that's willing to take it over?
Yep, Terry Lehman.
That's awesome.
How many students are necessary to create a new club, is there a a guideline or is it a?
Um, it depends, it really depends on what everybody else is doing, because they don't have sixty thousand dollars to work with. So it's kinda based on enrollment and who is uh in interest. But um, these, the the best deal we have is that first year with the pilot program, so.
When it's a new club, cause we haven't had a chance to negotiate it.
Twenty-two?
Are you sure she pays?
That's right.
How many was that, I missed it.
Twenty-two.
Oh, wow.
And who is taking it over?
Terry Lehman.
Lehman, that's great, are you one of those twenty-two?
No.
That's a lot of quilters.
Never tried, but maybe I will.
It's a, it's interesting, because some other kids wanna have a sewing club.
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Can it be a combo?
I think that's great, I think that's great.
It should be the sewing club and then the quilting division.
That's good. So uh, I will make a motion to approve this side letter of agreement with the Georgetown Education Association. To create an advisor stipend for the quilting club in the amount of six hundred dollars for the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year.
Second.
Uh, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Terry will do a great job with that, I'm sure. Okay, uh, subcommittee reports. Who is met?
We met.
We met, budget and finance met.
Everybody can't remember, they met.
Yeah.
Yep, budget and finance met, yep, we have a ongoing uh monthly thing going, but I do, the next meeting you are unable to attend. So do you wanna, do you wanna look at it now, or do you wanna?
Yeah, we'll do that.
Yeah, okay, we can do that.
We have to?
All right, we'll change the date.
Um, okay, so. Uh, we talked about revolving accounts.
Yes, we spent most of our revolving.
We talked a lot about athletics.
Yeah.
Um.
The budget.
The process.
And the budget process, yeah.
The calendar, we could, I thought we were very productive and I think the monthly meetings are gonna be needed and then maybe even. As we get into January or December, January maybe, we'll need even more than that, but.
Yeah, definitely.
I know, it's coming quick, it's gonna come quick, okay, that was good, uh, governance, uh, Cheryl and I met?
We, we did, but I thought we already talked about that last time, we did.
So we haven't met since then, okay, yes, okay.
Um, so.
Do we have a meeting set up for governance?
We should.
I thought we had a whole series of meetings, yeah.
And we have plenty to talk about, because we also have.
Do the technology things next, oh, Peter, well, you're here.
Almost.
You were so close. You didn't get out of here quick enough, Peter was asking, might as well talk about this for a minute. Peter was asking about the field trips, and not the field trips, the uh, the the Europe trip.
This is Michael's favorite subject.
So I told Peter, I I told Peter I would call you, cause I I like, honestly, I went through my notes and I, they weren't clear enough. So, you know, there's a a group that wants to go on February vacation.
Not vacation.
Sorry, say it again then, Peter, tell me.
I think it's, I think pretty sure it's in Feb, she wants to go to Carnival in Quebec City.
What what class is this?
I thought that was Rio. I thought that was Rio.
Is it, is it the quilting club?
You too.
So, I guess.
So it's just French students?
But, but tell us what, so it would be during the, partly during the school week and partly during vacation?
No.
No.
All school.
It's gonna be like a couple of school days, if, what, the scenario she's talking about now is very preliminary.
Thought I had, I thought I got the. Okay.
So, she was talking a couple, that, because Carnival, you gotta get it in that ra- it, it doesn't go during vacation.
Okay.
Right, it must be a specific time.
Yeah. Anyway, like a couple, it's like a Thursday and a Friday and a Saturday and a Sunday, something like that.
Okay. So, so if they did, I'm, I'm assuming would, they would do it through a tour group?
Yep.
Okay, so, my understanding of what we talked about is, if you do it through a tour group, then, then it's not a school-sponsored event. So, if the teachers go and they chaperone, they're doing it through.
EF tours or whatever.
EF tours or whatever, company is.
I, I, I don't think, just because it's a s- tour group, it does, a company, it doesn't mean it's not a school sponsor. So, we have to make that decision because if the teacher is organizing it, it's school-sponsored. If we're allowing the teachers to go, uh, as a professional day, rather than taking p- personal days, it's school-sponsored.
During school time.
If they use school email, the, the bill, anything, it's school-sponsored.
Right.
So, I guess we have to decide that if we wanna do that, or then put it in the hands of the parents and the teachers really can't have anything to do with it, and if they wanna chaperone it, they have to, uh, you know, take personal time to do it.
The, the teachers can still, if I understand our discussion, or if I remember our discussion, the t- the teachers can still be running the trip, but they're running it as the teacher bringing a group of students. They're not doing it as the French teacher of Georgetown High School. So they're not using school resources, they're not using emails and promoting the school.
Oh, yeah, they could do it on their own, yeah, and assume that liability.
Yeah.
See why, see why it's, to me, it's still sketchy, I don't, I don't know what we decided, so.
I would recommend that.
Well, and it winds up, and that's why most do it with the EF tours model is, EF tours is the one assuming.
Responsibility, and that's what I thought the discussion was at.
Responsibility.
Isn't that kind of like a field trip?
Didn't the lawyers recommend that if we were to continue with such trips, we simply, we require the highest level of insurance?
It's, it's, it's not trip cancellation, it's insurance.
For the students to buy, buy that.
Well, that's, yeah, that's cancellation, okay?
But that's if we.
They, they did suggest that.
That's if we sponsored it, but I'm pretty sure the lawyers told us to stay away from.
They told us not to do the trips.
Right, right.
Not to sponsor them, if the teacher wants to do it.
But they al- but, but they also went into, if we chose to go ahead with them, this is how we would do it.
Because of the liability. Okay, so, so I think we're not ready to approve his trip, so that, so he, he said to me, could you, could you bring it before the school committee to get the trip approved? And I said, I, I don't think I know quite how we're interpreting this yet, so, but you're not on governance anymore.
Right. I'm not.
So, that's part of what I told Peter, I said that the challenge is.
I mean, I would, I would say unlike a coral festival or whatever, I think, in that it's a more involved thing, I think it would be helpful to get the proposal, the application, whatever you wanna call it beforehand, and not be voting on it that night because there, there's more to it.
Oh, oh, absolutely.
So, almost like present it now with an expectation that we would have an answer.
Next time.
Next meeting, you know, whatever that is, so that we could ask the questions and do the work in between.
Call a meeting.
Okay, well, we can, we can do, we can do that, you can get it from, from her, and then we can, you know, we can, um.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Because that makes sense.
Gather around, but. That Carnival, it's from January twenty-sixth to February eleventh, that timeframe.
Yeah, so I think it's the beginning of February she was gonna go.
Yeah, which isn't the school vacation week.
But the thing is to put that, to, to get that proposal together, the teachers are doing a lot of work, so.
But it's.
Right.
Really, you know, where is that line?
Yeah, so are we likely not to approve something that is school-sponsored? That, that, that's what I think to Peter's point, is if we, that's why I wasn't sure.
Right.
Michael may not be, but I.
I, I, I.
I don't, I'm all for trips.
I'm all for trips.
I'm all, I, I.
The more trips the better, I think.
I know what you're saying, you just don't want this, the liability, you're questioning the liability part of it, you're not against trips, I, I get that.
Yeah. Yeah. And it's not curricular, there's an issue with, with funding students who might not be able to attend financially, like, there are school-related issues with a trip like that.
All of the things that if you don't sponsor, we don't have to worry about.
Correct.
And there is a policy that states.
Sorta not really.
Yeah, the policy is a little.
Yeah.
That's why we took it up in governance.
And yet the opportunity to experience another country in an event is.
Oh, yeah, we, we.
There's some schools that go to Spain and France and.
But they're not school-sponsored.
School-sponsored. They run it a different way.
It's, it's the, the journey.
But this, but, and, but this is unique too, because it's not during school vacation, so it really makes it very.
They run it, they run it on vacation.
Vacation. During school time.
Right.
Um, sticky.
Yeah.
Cause like you had said, if the teachers wanna partake in it, they'd have to take personal time.
You know, and the kids, that.
And the kids.
And the kids would have to be out of school.
Oh, they'd be out of school.
Be unex- unexcused absences.
It'd be what?
Unexcused absences.
Is it, well, I don't want that arrangement.
They're just on vacation.
Well, sick.
Well, that's if it were not a school-sponsored event.
Right, right, that can't, I don't think teachers are gonna take.
If you allow them, if you excuse them, then you're assuming liability.
Would you let a non-school-sponsored event to happen?
Then it's a halfway, if not all the way, yeah.
But would we ever, would we ever allow a non-school-sponsored event to happen during school time?
Well, it's just if you happen to be going on vacation.
I, I'm not.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, but.
Not, not a school program, yeah.
Carol.
I.
Now, maybe you can give that, that pamphlet to the entire committee, so they can read, there, there is a pamphlet that came from somewhere
It doesn't seem right.
Which, okay.
Yeah.
that we were looking at, that really is specific about.
Oh, that was, well, we looked at.
It's exclusive about.
Yes.
If you do this, it's school-sponsored.
Right, yes, right.
So, and one of the things is if you let the kids go without, I don't wanna call it consequence, cause there really won't be any consequences,
I'm sure we have it here.
but we're not gonna excuse the absence. If you excuse the absence, you're sponsoring the trip.
Okay.
That whole excused and unexcused absences have always made me scratch my head, so.
But then we become liable.
Well, if, if you wanna get into things as I'm going out the door, I've been asking for a district attendance policy for fifteen years, and this is one of the few districts that don't have one.
Oh, then why don't we have one?
I mean, I'm not on governance, that's a great idea.
I don't know if I've ever, I don't know if I've ever known that you wanted that.
Forever.
Okay, well, that can be on our agenda for the next governance meeting, because that, we should have that.
I think we need to meet more than once a month.
That, that, that's pretty big.
What's been, what's been the reason it hasn't, Peter?
Isn't it?
Because I don't think there's been a public appetite for it.
So.
It's co- it's controversial, it doesn't matter why you're absent. If you're absent for four times, you're sitting in front of a committee and you lose credit. So, it doesn't matter what the reasons are, and, and.
What do you mean?
And we don't have a vacation policy, we don't have any of that in this.
That's why we don't do it.
Cause it hasn't been clear.
But what do you mean, you're sitting in front of a committee?
They have an attendance committee and they, you have to appeal, it wa- to get your credit back.
Right, so, so what credit are they losing?
They, they lose their.
So they get so many credits taken off depending on how many days they're off?
No, if you reach a certain amount of days.
How many? Mm-hmm.
then you don't get credit for that quarter. So, rather than at the end of the year when you pass English, you're not getting five credits, you might get two and a half.
So I think we, we would need to maybe, like, you, you, somebody made the point, like, other, Peter did, other districts do it, well, we should collect examples of it.
See what other districts.
That's a long, a long process that honestly probably should wait for the next administration.
Do it.
Right.
I was just gonna say, you're retarded.
We've been operating reasonably well to this time.
Code for, I don't really want to take this on before I leave.
So many initiatives going in that pool right now, it's, we're, we're up to here, I mean, with Niasq and the one-to-one, and we have.
We do, we do, we do, yeah. Yeah. Makerspaces and.
Uh, uh. Student wellness things going on and surveys, it's just.
Yeah.
But I wanna, we wanna do things well, not just do a million things and.
You wanna prioritize. Prioritize.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm not suggesting this, and I mentioned this to a few of you, that we were on vacation the end of June, and we ran into people from England, and they told us that if they take their kids out of school for more than like three or four days, they're fined, like, money back, I'm not recommending, but.
We could make them money.
They get fined.
Fine.
The money goes into a revolving account for Peter, he might like the idea.
That'd be fun to collect, it's like.
Yeah, that would be fun to collect, yeah.
We would do a budget. I don't suggest that.
We need to know that.
So, I, I think.
As it relates to Quebec, I would say not a proposal, but a.
At the field, the, correct, yeah.
Strong.
Or, like, like a, like a, like a.
A presentation.
Sure, something that will give us information.
So can I make a suggestion that Mary and you, you know, meet with, you know, the governance and maybe Michael can come? Right, and, and there be just a discussion about it, so that we, you know.
Does that break open meeting law?
No.
Well.
Member of the public.
They're gonna hear.
I mean, I, I don't mean to, it's, you know.
Well, no, I think.
We've had discussions about three people in a subcommittee before.
Yeah, I don't think, yeah, well, I don't think, he doesn't, Michael doesn't have, we don't have to have a discussion about it, but he can hear the. I, I'm really just interested in the pres- in a presentation about it, I wanna understand it a little bit better, cause I, it's fo- it's, it's foggy to me.
Michael becomes more informed about.
Yes, and I don't want them to do a lot of work.
I feel like Barbie and Pam, I, I think we all agree, I really don't wanna discourage these trips, but I wanna be sure that we're clear on are we sponsoring or aren't we sponsoring them?
Right, agreed.
And, and I'm, you know, this one is kind of a little, a little, like Barbie's, a little wonky, because it is during school time.
Dates.
So it's not like you could just say, okay, EF tours, you know, a teacher wants to organize something through EF tours for April vacation. And then, you know, hey, you know, EF tours is the, is the group, you, you know, it has nothing to do with us. That's different. This is gonna be like literally during school time. Kids are gonna miss school, I mean, I don't know how that's not school-sponsored.
Well, and I can't imagine that the teachers would wanna do it, if they'd have to take their own personal time. I think that right there would be them saying, you know what?
I don't know.
Yeah, why don't we meet?
Let's meet.
Let's do that. We'll set up a date that you and Mary.
And you and Mary can come.
Yep.
And we'll talk about it.
Perfect.
We'll get more, okay.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
You better go while you can.
Go.
He's running too.
Thank you, Peter.
Bye.
Goodbye, goodnight. Um, so who else?
We met.
Public relations.
Public relations, yeah.
How'd you do?
We did great.
How'd you do?
How did you do?
Well, we talked, we talked about some.
We had chocolate.
Some, some different ways, um, of relating to the public, um, in terms of, um, in terms of Carol, um, like coffees with Carol, or some focus groups we talked about, maybe during conference times at school, so she'd be present, uh, for people to either drop in and ask questions, or even, you know, pick a certain time.
So people won't go to her like, you know, where I'll be saying, oh.
Go see Carol.
Go see Carol, but people don't, so they won't go see Carol, Carol will go see the students.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's good.
You know, so there's a little bit more.
And I, and I may, I may do a blog, and I, I'm thinking about doing a blog about it, you know, just I wanna do these, these coffees, you know, what, what kind of things do you wanna talk about? You know, maybe we'll, we'll see, we'll see.
Some type of focus group, you know, come up with some subject and weigh in.
That's good.
Yeah, I like that.
Um, yeah, we also talked about, um, Margaret's plan for more volunteerism and, in the classrooms,
Yeah, in the classroom.
and we talked about, you know, the confidentiality and the need for, you know, having a sign-off perhaps on that, and we also talked about, you know, for this to really be done well, it needs some kind of coordinator.
Kind of coordination, yeah.
Um, you know, in terms of finding, figuring out different ways that parents can volunteer and different needs that teachers might have.
So we were thinking of, um, coordinator that would work between the parents and the teachers, and set up schedules and things like that.
Okay.
And have, you know. You know, and just talk to them about.
Can I just say something? You guys are very funny. The way you're going off on it, 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 like she's saying one thing and then all of a sudden Suzanne, you did it twice, it was interesting, like you started, and then Suzanne like chimed in.
She embellished.
I'll just sit here.
No, you're good. No, I like it.
No, they, they were.
I'm talking the business.
They were very, they were definitely very enthusiastic.
Did you notice that?
They were very enthusiastic.
But, but you, she knew when you were gonna talk, it was like, you didn't like over, over.
Oh wow.
Did you rehearse?
Or team.
I would say the last big thing that we talked about was the district satisfaction survey and.
Hundred thirty-five questions.
And, you know, kind of thinking about the future for the district satisfaction survey to really think about what we wanna know and, you know, what are we gonna do with the information we have.
Right, cause it's not just what we wanna know, we wanna know, okay, we have this information, what are we gonna do about it? What's gonna drive? So we're also thinking of making categories and under those categories, just very specific laser questions. But also driven by what can we do about it?
So like the lunch buses, things like that, like pickup drop off?
Not, no, no, more like.
More like um some strategic plan. Well, that's sort of what we do.
We sorta did it this, yeah, we, yeah, we were talking about the fact that some of the questions, it's hard to know, like, what is it really telling us? Like what, and what can we really do about it? You know, it's some kind, it's kind of perceptions versus, you know, something concrete that we could take something away from it. So we thought maybe what we would do is a combination of those things, looking, looking at, not necessarily. The plan was driving the questions as opposed to, you know, the areas that we wanna know about, then how can we create questions that then do link to the strategic plan, but the plan isn't the driver? Does that represent what we talked about?
Right, and we also talked about, we should, we should also talk about the successes that we've had.
Yes.
You know, that have been in place because of issues that arose.
The technology was one, we, we had.
The lunch.
Some poor ratings, poor, uh, you know, issues that were discussed in that way and then by doing some strategic things, we definitely, you know, up the, up the success rate for, and obviously the satisfaction rate we're, we saw, so that was good. So we're gonna really try to get into the, what the results might say, cause it, we, we hope to use some of it when we do the next strategic plan. For the final year of this plan. So, like we did last year, remember, we, when we, or the last time we did it, we, we put, took, said, these are the things that the committee took away from the first satisfaction survey, these priorities, and then we made sure those were embedded in the plan. It was, we, we were very productive.
We were.
Sounds great. Well, and Carol also gave us a little.
She had the big map out.
I showed him the map.
Markers. Surprised you didn't bring it tonight, that was.
I know, I almo- I almost did bring it, then I'm like, no, I don't wanna get into like this long drawn out thing, but I'll show you the map if you come in the office.
If you wanna see, if you wanna see it.
Well, I'm pretty visual, so like I, like if you go into the other room, you see I've got this little map, it was imagining like the buses, like, okay, if I reverse the routes. You know, how does that work? And it's just a bunch of things that I understand, but you probably wouldn't, but it, making the picture helped me see it visually.
So did anybody else meet?
Yes.
Safety.
I went to my first safety meeting.
That was Pam's first choice.
Yeah, it was.
I know, I said, I said, oh, you and Barbie duked it out. I wasn't sure who ended up, who was gonna end up here.
Because I made it my first choice, so you let me say no.
My first choice, so they couldn't tell me no.
Oh, that's how it works?
I don't know.
Yeah, I think so, like if, you know, your first choice, you should kinda get your first choice. You know, I've been a part of this committee for years in the past and it's just very um, you know, informative and inspiring. And I just love watching our different um departments within the town work together and, and the trust and, and the um, you know, creative problem solving. Um, so, we met on September twenty-first, not that long ago. And people, you know, Fred Mitchell, the Chief Mitchell was there of the Fire Department and Lieutenant Scott Hatch of the Police Department. Henry Olshewski, the School Resource Officer, Carol was there, Guy Prescott was there, Margaret Mayer, Hope Doran. Cindy McKenzie and Vicky Lake, I don't think I had met Vicky Lake, she's the safety supervisor, right. And myself, so we started out with the transportation report, which is the buses, but we've already spoken about that. Uh, I would just say that Cindy had a suggestion that we put up no parking signs along the Penbrook Bus Drive coming out onto the main driveway.
Why are people parking there?
Because there's no space in the lots.
Well, no, the, the, they are full, but the top lots are never full. Nobody ever goes up and parks in that top lot, cause they don't wanna walk down.
It's more pickup than drop off.
Pickup.
Right.
There are, I mean, I would not wanna pick up my kindergartner and walk to the top lot. I mean, there are kindergartners, there are kindergarten parents that are parked on the grass because those two lots are full.
On the grass?
Or on the, like.
Right. So Margaret tried to address that at, at, at Penn night.
Bus can't get through.
In both and said that, you know, that, that the middle lot is reserved at that time for kindergarten.
But there's no, other than Margaret saying, like, there's no indication at the physical lot?
No, there isn't.
And I'm not saying we need to have someone standing up, but there's no way anyone who doesn't know that would know that.
It's right, so if anybody, right, well, I, I didn't know that.
Well, that's why she's suggesting signs. I mean, I, I'm pretty.
I'm just saying no parking sign is.
Scrupulous myself.
The sign isn't, no parking sign isn't gonna tell the kindergarten parents. Yeah, I mean, I can, I can talk to, I can talk to, well, the kindergarten parents know where to park, it's the other people that are parking in the lot.
Right.
That, that should be respectful of the fact that that, if it's, the kindergarten people are really only there, they get dismissed five minutes early, they're in and out.
Cheryl's there for like two hours.
But like to be early. But that's not the norm, right, right? I mean, you could also have a sign that says five minutes parking, you know, like I tell you, there's that spot in the teacher's lot that I park when I know I'm only gonna be in the school for five, ten minutes, no more than ten minutes, and if it was, I wouldn't park more than that there. But there's no sign that specifically says that.
Right, but the point is, it's, it may not be the kindergarten people on that to, it, 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 they, they should be parking up top cause what they're doing is they're, not only they're parking on that, that bus loop, which makes it tou- tough for the bus, buses to get by. Is they also park on the road going up.
Right.
Well, there definitely should be no parking signs there, no doubt, because you shouldn't park.
Parking signs up, you know.
But how do we fig- how do we address the kindergarten lot issue?
Margaret is trying, she puts it in her this week, she mentioned it at Penn night.
I hate to say it though, until someone goes out and actually, like Rita Pizzuto used to do it at Pearlie.
Kick 'em out.
She would come out and she would, people would be like mortified, so they would never do it again, she would walk right out and be like, you are not supposed to be parked here, move your car.
We used to do that at Pearlie and Heidi Beegan, we'll tell you, cause Heidi Beegan used to go, but Heidi said she, she was, she was shocked at how she was treated.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, there are.
I'd be shocked too, but that's awful.
The tricky thing about, I mean, parents need to know that they can park in that upper lot.
Yeah.
But I think it's a little misleading because the queue is there, so they would have to pass the queue.
And then people would be mad.
Right, so I think it's.
But mo- but I'm wondering if, does that queue thing doesn't seem to, doesn't seem to get bad until pretty close to dismissal, is that right? Cause it used to be, it used to be that they'd start at two ten and they, they would be all the way up the road. My sense is that.
Yeah, that's true.
That the people who, I just, I don't know, I think that Margaret really needs to tell people that if you're there before the, the dismissal process starts. And there are no places in the, in the lots, you need to, you need to look in the upper lot before you're parking.
You know, and maybe have a sign on the cone, you know, as the, as the cones are lined up for the people in the queue. You know, and then maybe a cone, you know, the orange cone saying kindergarten parking only, you know, so that you can.
I'll, I'll ask her about the, I'll ask her about the kindergarten, um.
Here's the other thing, is that you have the family door. And I thought the spirit of the family door is if you have a kindergartner and an upper grade student. But there are some kids who just have a first grader or just have a second grader and they park and they go to the family door to get their child. They don't wanna wait in the queue, so that.
So their child goes to the family door?
The rule breakers.
Well, and I don't know if it's breaking a rule, like, but I thought the spirit of it was if you have to get two kids in different grades.
That is the spirit of it.
But some parents feel either they don't wanna wait in the line or it's more convenient. Or some of them are trying to get to Pearlie to pick up preschool, so.
Some of them are just unclear on what they.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll, I'll ask Margaret about that, cause I know Margaret is always trying to make that, you know, even more clear. And I think this was the first year we've actually seen people parking in that bus, that bus. Thing, and actually, we, there's somebody stationed there, like a body station there?
Too late though. They get there after everyone, they, they're, they're walking out there when I'm driving away. So they're, they're getting out for like.
Maybe that's the problem, cause that's, I, I asked Margaret that, I said, Margaret, isn't there somebody there?
Yeah, not yet.
And um, she said, yes, there's somebody there, so I'm thinking, well, I don't think they're allowing them to park there, so you're right.
They need to go out earlier.
Okay, I'll, I'll ask her about it. Uh, and we also talked about Alice training and um Carol, you, you thanked Officer Henry for everything that he's done because he's.
He was good, he trained everybody, yeah?
Yep, yep.
Him, he and Terry, Officer Detective Jones.
The middle school student training will take place before Thanksgiving. Um, as the seventh graders have not yet participated in a full drill, so that's going to be a learning experience for them. Um, on November eighth, Henry's gonna teach the seventh and eighth graders about cyber bullying and will also introduce their, them to the idea of Alice and drill, the full drill. The Fire Department does provide ambulance coverage for full-on Alice drills, uh, just for people's information.
Is there, how do new, I know we talked about new staff who's trained over the summer, what about new students to the district? That, like, a choice student who comes in ninth grade, do they get?
They're gonna get trained at the same time as the seventh graders.
Okay, so there is, they are captured, okay.
Okay, um, we talked about the MIAA saying next year that we need an AED uh at practice facilities for next year, so we need to look into that, portable AEDs, field outdoor AEDs. The Police Department is seeking another or more crossing guards as someone has retired. We do have people filling in the gaps, but um we're looking for somebody who'd be interested in that opportunity. The Tricker Trunk event is scheduled for October fourteenth and Georgetown, the CPAC is working in close um cooperation and connection to the Fire Department and the Police Department. Henry and, and Chief Fred, um, so the Tricker Trunk is going to be, it's basically, the whole thing is between one and six. Um, but the, at two o'clock, the decorator cars will be entering the lots. Right, one o'clock is for setup and volunteers, two o'clock, all the decorator cars will come in. Three o'clock, all the people who are not in decorator cars will come in, they'll be parking in different location. Up in the teacher's lot and the lower lot by the fields. Um, and the Tricker trunking event, the, um, the, the stu- students going around getting candy and showing all their, their costumes and everything will be from three to five o'clock. And then everything at five o'clock, people will exit in a safe, coordinated manner, which will have about ten to fifteen parking lot attendants, of which I will be one, coached and trained by Officer Olshewski. So we'll be giving directions to people on, on leaving, um, and then, so that's, that's that. Um, let's see, the first round of fire drills went very well according to the Fire Department.
We got that down.
Yep, students were out in three minutes at Penbrook. Let's see, we're also gonna be, Fred will be looking at the level of the AED mounting required at Penbrook. If there is uh any question about that and.
I thought we already followed up.
Yeah.
Well, we have a parent who's questioning it, so we're.
Yeah, follow up with the EMS director and Mike Anderson.
One was situated where the kids were hitting their head and then another one was situated that if someone was in a wheelchair, they couldn't reach it, so.
Yeah, I, 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 again, I don't know, I, again, I understood that it, it met the, you know, the criteria. So Fred was going to uh go, go over one more time and take a look at it.
And they moved the other one.
They did.
Good.
There's one upstairs, there's, yeah.
We had an Elm Street update from Peter Durkey, who says that the construction is way ahead of schedule and will be finished in October. Um, construction stops work at two thirty with minor exceptions. Uh, there will be a day that a top coat is going to be put on Elm Street, that's gonna, we're gonna try to make that a Saturday, not October fourteenth. Uh, but there could be some delays related to that as we go forward. Um, and Carol recapped with goals for the year, uh, we're gonna continue working on the Alice Training Program and, and updating that. Uh, we're gonna talk about the opioid crisis and how that impacts the town and it, health education and policy coordinating with public safety. Um, and continued the line of, of communication with the buses, improving, trying to improve routes as we've already discussed. And that's it. Um, so I, I also just could update on the Georgetown, the CPAC. Uh, they're going to have a basic rights workshop uh on October second at the Public Library at six forty-five. Um, with Laurel Collins, MED and educational advocate, and then the Tricker Trunk event. Also, within October, in the upcoming month, there's gonna be a transition workshop, Attorney Claire Van on Wednesday uh, six forty-five, also at the Georgetown, at the Peabody Library. Okay, that's it.
Thank you. You are the liaison for the PTA, right? And the first meeting is the.
October fourth.
And the superintendent will be there along with the principals?
Yes.
Seventy-eight thirty, seventy-eight thirty?
And the location?
Penbrook Library.
At Penbrook, okay.
Yeah, good.
Yes, well, and the auction is getting closer, so.
November eighteenth?
November eighteenth, we're still working on.
Are you on the committee for that, Cheryl?
Um, I'm soliciting donations.
Okay, okay.
So yes.
So, yes, although I haven't really gone to a meeting, but I'm soliciting donations and getting volunteers to help me solicit donations.
Okay.
So if anybody.
Donations in terms of like gift cards?
Gift cards.
So raffle items?
Yes, like going into.
Quilts. I love quilts.
Yeah, mostly at this point where.
Get one at the high school though.
Join the quilting club. Um, is, you know, going into say a restaurant.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and explaining what we're doing and asking for a gift card donation and whatnot, so that's where I'm working on.
Okay, good.
It's not an easy job.
No, it's not.
Yeah, it's kinda out of my comfort zone.
Yeah.
Well, and it's difficult too, I, it totally out of my comfort zone too, but it's difficult to, I feel for the businesses
Yes.
in Georgetown, because there is not a ton of restaurants, pizza place, things like that, that I think they do get inundated different times of the year and.
Pretty hard. And we got a lot in Rowley.
Really?
Actually, yeah, Newburyport, where we're doing Ipswich.
Yeah.
Because we have Georgetown people that frequent those businesses and such.
Seaburg today.
Wow, 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 you're going out of your comfort zone, but you're going to Georgetown, good for you.
Right.
Maybe it's easier to ask people you don't know.
Is your, is your comfort zone just location?
No, it's the, the act of.
The act of ask, asking for something, I know.
It's all good.
That's good, so I wish them the best, November eighteenth, those PTA and the GEF will be here, um, on the sixteenth of November, hopefully, if, if that works out for them, so. Um, we'd like to hear from them and see what great things they have in store for the, for the year, so thank you.
Do we know how links for learning did?
Yes, we do, um, they made between eight and nine, and nine thousand dollars.
Oh my goodness.
So I went, I went over when they were all getting ready to tee off and then I went over, you know, around supper time and, um, yeah, they, they, everybody had a great round of golf, it was beautiful weather, it was perfect.
Yeah.
They, um, they said that they had enough foursomes, so everybody is a shotgun start. So all eighteen holes were covered and then there were actually a couple of foursomes that, so there was like a second round, cause apparently they could accommodate like two full rounds. But they were happy because they said a week before, they had like thirty people.
Hmm.
And so, you know, people at the, you know, in the last week or so, you know, signed up and played, but everybody, everybody always has such a great time, they're, you know, there's good camaraderie, they're the people that organize it, do an outstanding job, but to, but think about that, to make eight thousand dollars, you know, in a, in an afternoon. You know, it's pretty impressive, so, you know, thanks to all the golfers who play, thanks to people who organize it, but yeah, they did well.
Good, good for them.
Okay.
Um, no word on the gala?
Uh, the, uh, I don't, you know, I, I don't know the date offhand, they, they have a date, I believe, picked. Uh, I asked the other day when I was talking to them about, you know, is there a theme yet? And they said they, they're still playing with that, they haven't got something ready yet.
But it's usually April, right?
Usually March or April in that ballpark, yeah, yeah, and I think it, they're still working on that timeframe, I think.
So maybe on the sixteenth, we can get some information out of them for that.
Definitely.
Good. Uh, okay, it wouldn't be a school committee meeting without uh accepting donations from the very generous uh, community that we live in, so we do have um a donation from Swan Scott Glass, there is a gentleman in, in town that, um, is an owner of that business. And he has graciously offered to donate uh three thousand, a hundred and seventy-five dollars worth of uh, mirrors that will go into the weight room.
Wow.
At the middle high school, which is great, it's great, um, because you need mirrors in a weight room, because the kids aren't gonna know if they're working out properly and things like that, so that is very generous, so I do wanna make a motion to accept this very generous uh, donation of mirrors which will be installed in the middle high school weight room from Swan Scott Glass.
So moved, second.
Uh, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, that's very.
Yeah, that's a great donation.
Yeah, that'll be, that'll be great, and I would. So their materials, labor, right, so I wonder when they'll do that, like on the weekend or.
I don't know, I told them, don't do it till they, donation is accepted, so I think that fairly cer- fairly soon, because I think they wanted it sooner than later. That's why I said, you really gotta get the stuff to us for this school committee meeting, otherwise you're, you're gonna wait till the end of the month. Or to the middle of next month, so they said, they got it in right away, so I, I believe it will be very shortly now that they're gonna do it.
Great, and we have another athletics donation, the amount of three hundred and fifty dollars from the Georgetown Building Supply uh, and Georgetown Liquors. Um, very generous of this, um, business to do that, they've been around for a long time, Georgetown Building Supply and they have been always great supporter of uh, school events, I remember when we did like the chili cook-off in the PTA. They were always very generous about letting us utilize their space, um, always good, working with them. Um, so this will go, so in athletics, any specific?
No, it's gonna just go into the athletic revolving.
Okay.
I'm sure we'll have use for it.
Yeah, it'll go in that section that gets kept aside.
It can be used, um, so I will make a motion to accept the generous three hundred and fifty dollar donation with gratitude from Georgetown Building Supply and Georgetown Liquors, which will be used in the athletic department.
So moved, second.
Whatever, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And of course, it wouldn't be a school committee meeting without a PTA donation, which is always very nice of them. Um, opening day ceremonies, had a guest speaker.
We did, yeah.
And I, I recall discussing that with you and you said it was very well received, this was the same guest speaker that the peer mentors?
Yes, it's the, it's the same couple, they, they speak all over the country, but they do a lot of work with, you know, youth groups, pe- peer mentors. Yeah, so they came and the PTA, you know, I was really thinking they might help me with a, a bit of it. And then they, just like they did last year, they picked up the whole prize.
That would be very nice of them to do that.
Yeah.
Um, so thank you, PTA, I will make a motion to accept the one thousand five hundred dollar donation that was used to um, have a guest speaker at the uh, start of the school year for the staff as presented.
So moved, second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, and did I, I didn't notice that, the declaration of surplus TVs. Did I not go to, oh, Paul Swain, he did have that, yep. Um, year of manufacture nineteen ninety-eight, yeah, I think they're beyond their useful life. Right?
Probably the tubes. And you have to change the channel.
You have to get off UHF.
We do make use of our materials right.
And it's black and white.
To the bitter end.
That's funny. Okay. Um, I will make a motion to um, declare the surplus TVs that were designated by Mr. Paul Swain, which will be um disposed of according to proper protocol, perfect.
So moved, second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're good. You don't need me here.
He's just a creature of habit, he hears it over and over.
I'm stumbling. Thank you for that. Okay, that looks like it's uh, the end of the agenda for me.
Yeah, it is.
Did I miss anything?
It's good.
No, it's all good.
Good.
All right, so I will uh, make a motion to adjourn the meeting at nine twelve PM. There is no reason to have an executive session, which is great, so we will see you in a couple of weeks.
Two.
Oh.
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.
Thank you.